Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 26, 2022, Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. If you need a listening device, Carol can help you with that. She's up here in the blue jacket. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Karski. If you are planning to speak today, we would ask you to sign in on the sheet by the door with your name and address. And I think we're ready to move on then. Routine business, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move, Benega.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All of whom favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is, item number two is consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Vote.
Second. And a second on consent agenda. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi, Peter.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number, oh, next round, opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on something that's not on today's agenda, it would be your chance. Good morning, Teresa.
So Teresa Pesch, and I'd like to speak about election security. And so I'm going to start again with video. And actually, it was said last week that the videos were old, and they're not. This is actually Kamala Harris in 20, from 2020. And then the next one will be, I believe he's a Senator Wyden, and that video's from 2019. Thanks. So I may not get this right on the screen, but it's going to show up, but the point is to at least hear it.
... about vulnerabilities to our national security. We are vulnerable in terms of foreign interference with our elections. It's my understanding that some of the election system vendors have required states to sign agreements that prevent or inhibit independent security testing. There's a saying that I'm sure many of you have heard, which is...
Hold it up to the microphone.
... the difference between being hacked and not being hacked is knowing you've been hacked. And they are still hackers according to Wisconsin, Michigan, Florida, Iowa, Indiana, Arizona. Even the state of Georgia, which just passed legislation to buy new voting machines, is on track to buy equipment that suffers from the significant cybersecurity weakness. Let's say the election is decided by a small percentage, and people in America don't think that the election was fair. The effect that that would have on our 200-year experiment in self-governance, our Georgia...
And then there's just one more, and this is still Senator Wyden.
And I said, the experts I talked to say that until you have a forensic analysis of a vote, until you go in there and scrub the whole system, you can't really say that. So they're giving these voting machines...
So with bringing up the elections and the machines, it was said that there's no way that there could have been dishonest. And so that was just a few people in office speaking about how it could be. And then also, it was mentioned about federal money that came from HAVA. And with all due respect, is, this is from the EAC, and I guess the projector's not working, but they actually, with HAVA, is they give the states money. So federal money is everybody's money. It's, it's the taxpayers' nationwide piggy bank. And so with HAVA is actually in 2018, they gave, federal funding was for South Dakota, South Dakota only, is in 2018, HAVA money, election security was $3 million. In 2020, election security was $3 million. Also, on the spending list with HAVA for nationwide, it goes to, there's cybersecurity, voting equipment, voter registration, post-election auditing, which South Dakota doesn't, it's not required that the state do, but it is suggested that the state have a post-election audit. So if the EAS and HAVA feels that election security and cybersecurity is so important, I don't understand why this committee and the auditor think that it's not. And that's the impression I get, that you all think that it's cybersecurity is not all that important. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at public comment?
Good morning. My name is Mike Mathis. I love America, just like all of us do. And I want to make sure my kids have the same opportunities that I have had growing up. I'm a part of the South Dakota canvassing group. So you say we are, we are all misinformation. I think the auditor was advised on ballot boxes, we were not misinformation. They were not in compliance with the law. Guess we were right about that. 2,000 Mules is playing in Sioux Falls on May 2nd and May 4th at 7:00 PM at the Century Stadium on 2400 South Carolyn. Being that you have the position you have, and you know ballot boxes were not legal, why do you keep denying it and not just look at what evidence is out there? So now here we are with the machines. You say everything is perfect. Yet, you won't let a third-party, unbiased party inspect them. We have companies running our elections right now, not we, the people. Government is meant for full transparency. If there is nothing to hide, show us everything. You prove to us everything is fine, I promise we will go away. But until then, I'm sorry, there's too much on the line.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
No matter how many times I do this, it doesn't get any easier. Well, I know one of you folks watched the Dr. Frank video, and I thank you for doing that.
Just give your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy Meyer. I know one of you did watch the Dr. Frank video, and I appreciate that. Members of our group were lucky enough to visit with Dr. Frank after his presentation. As he was explaining to us what the findings were in different states, it kind of blew our mind. And a comment was made as to, how do they do something to inflate the voter rolls before an election? Dr. Frank said, "You don't think like a crook, do you?" Well, I would imagine that none of you think like a crook either. And I would bet, because if you did, you would be able to believe there is a possibility that there was fraud in our elections. I do not appreciate Ben's comments towards our group. It is totally disrespectful, the insinuations. He was referring to us as the organization. We are spreading disinformation, our misconception about things, and that we have small minority views. If these comments were not made directly towards us, if these comments were not made directly towards our group and our efforts, then I stand corrected. Excuse me. But the comment that takes the cake is to say that humans can't focus long enough to count ballots. Even though his comments in his presentation all seem to be geared toward discrediting our group, he was the one possibly that wasn't informed. There is a community of people in this area that don't think the election was fair. Why is it that we need to prove that to you? You are the elected officials, and it should be your job to prove it to us it was a fair election. If you think the election was so fair, then why don't we open up one of those tabulating machines and look under the hood for ourselves? That's where ESNS, the company, hides the chip that can automatically jump onto the Internet. And if that chip isn't inside the machine, which it probably is, then how do you know about the thumb drive you put into the machine? The crooks can affect the thumb drive or that specialty-designed computer that only gets turned on when you insert cards into it. A question I would be curious about is, just where does that special thumb drive come from? And who did you buy that specialty computer from? Are they all from the same third-party company? Are they the same third-party vendor that is on-site the night of an election? Why is a third-party vendor overseeing our elections? Yesterday, I had a patriot reach out to me in regards to that, and he said, "Just because there is no cord to the Internet, doesn't mean it is not connected." This guy has a 16-gig thumb drive he inserts into his game camera that connects wirelessly to his phone. From his phone, he can look at and manipulate photos from his game camera, then send them out onto the Internet from his wireless phone to friends all over the world. You can also get SD cards with Wi-Fi adapters inside of them. It doesn't take a cord to be able to connect to the Internet. It was suggested to our group, it was suggested that our group is only concerned with the primary and general elections. That is 100% not true, but we are battling against forces all the time, and we have to pick our battles. And our battle right now is the primaries and the general election. I do not understand the thought processes of having to make the election process easy so that the majority of people can take advantage of it. Do you think that the folks that served in Army services in our country had that mentality? They served, they fought, others died to protect our rights of free and fair elections. Voting is a privilege. Why has the focus become to make the process easy so that everyone takes advantage of it? If people truly want to cast a ballot, they will make sure the effort, they will make sure to put forth the effort to do so. People don't want easy. People want fair, secure, and unaltered elections. In closing, the comment that was most hostile, though, was a comment made regarding, why would you get, who would you get to count the ballots by hand? It would just be unemployed bozos. We have a number of unemployed people in our group, and our group consists of numerous accountants, IT people, a lawyer, ex-military, et cetera. I don't consider myself or any of the members of our group to be bozos, and any precinct would be lucky to have any one of us counting ballots. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there anyone else? Excuse me, excuse me. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at public comment?
Michael Stangland, from 1009 North Savannah. What comes to my mind with all this discussion, and, you know, particularly the mention of, you know, people don't have long enough attention span to count by hand, and something that comes to mind is, what I've heard is that there's oftentimes a mindset for people to only think back to, you know, as long as their own history, that somehow history only begins when you are born. And, well, consider how recent is it that, you know, these, the ability of these machines to exist and, you know, this technology, and how long is even just American history prior to the existence of those machines? And, I mean, I, I mean, it's my understanding that, I mean, no, not always a perfect system, but how long did America get along fine when counting by hand was the only option? I mean, we don't need these machines. We don't, I mean, I mean, a lot of this stuff, I mean, you can claim it's to make things easier, but, I mean, one, in some ways, it really just makes things more complicated by adding extra things. I mean, how much more complex is all the programming required to make these voting machines actually function versus the straightforward and simple process of, you've got a person, you've got a pile of ballots, the person looks at the ballot, it sees who has been marked on it, versus all the programming required to make the machine function properly? And, I mean, if a, I mean, if you know much about programming, you know all the code, all the type, I mean, all the openings for something to go wrong or for someone to insert something there that's going to be easy to miss for someone to, you know, do some funny business. And, I mean, especially right now, where, I mean, across the country, trust in elections and in all these things that have been added in is kind of at an all-time low. So, I mean, history tells us, we can get along fine without these things, and in some ways, the way, I mean, this extra complicated stuff, these machines and all that, I mean, they do more harm than good. I would, I mean, I would like to think that, you know, American people, your regular person, if they care about helping with the counting process, they are going to be able to have the kind of attention span to get through, to get through and do the job properly. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think history speaks in favor of basically the KISS principle. And, you know, some of this stuff may sound good on paper, may sound good at first glance, but if you think about it much, it just, it does more harm than good.
Thanks, Michael. Anyone else who wants to speak at public comment? Morning, Gary.
My name is Gary Meyer. I live in Minnehaha County. And most of my...
Madam Trump, uh, madam, there's an election next door.
Yeah, Gary, you can't wear that hat in the building anymore because there's an election going on. So I actually scanned the crowd, and I missed it. You can't wear it in here anymore, so, just because there's an election going on.
Well, most of my comments have already been said, so I won't repeat them. But I'd like to say I was very disappointed to review last week's video on the agenda item for the auditor's report. Our group, or as Ben refers to us several times as an organization of disinformation spreaders, have been trying to get election integrity on the agenda for months now to have a dialogue with you. But we are repeatedly denied. So to see your auditor get up here and present his audit report, only to use the majority of that time talking about election integrity, was quite frustrating for us. It was disguised on the agenda as the auditor's report, so none of, none of our group was here to defend the disinformation we are accused of spreading. Our organization is a group of dedicated volunteers that puts, that has put hundreds of hours and dollars into research, data mining, door-to-door canvassing, phone calls to come up with our disinformation. And yet, not one time during any of our five-minute limit presentations to present any of this data, has anybody ever even asked one question. But the county auditor gets up here to use his auditor presentation agenda item to talk about election integrity with an unlimited timeframe, which then turns into a question-and-answer period, of which I believe most every one of you participated in. Our group was referred to many times during his presentation as spewing disinformation and spreading doubt about our election system. A couple comments that were made were especially concerning. Ben commented that the specially-designed computer that he uses to collect data, that is used to collect the data, tallied data was not connected to the Internet. It only had a power cord connected to it, that it was impossible to connect to the Internet. I think most of us in here have a cellphone that doesn't have a power cord, and we can all connect to the Internet. Another comment was made about the test data, and that there were many test scenarios that were run through the machines ahead of time. I visited with somebody that was here for that test run, and was told that the test data was supplied by the very same company that sold you the machines, and that the ballots were run through one time, and that the results were compared to the results that that very same company supplied. I asked that person if they were allowed to see the test data, and the answer was no. Really? The same company that supplies the machines, supplies the test data, and supplies the answers it will produce. I used to work in IT. That's not how we tested our products. It just boggles my mind that none of you seem open to the idea of the possibility of huge corruption, mafia money is desperately working to control the outcome of our elections. How many of you locked your cars before coming into this meeting? How many of you turned on your security system in your house before you left this morning? Has your car or house ever been broken into? If not, why do you go so much, to such measures to protect it, as it has never been proven that anybody has ever even tried to open your car door or your house or window door? You did it because only you know there are evil people out there. That's the very reason we are trying so desperately to open your eyes of the possibility of evil people trying to hack into our, and control our election systems. You don't think the drug cartel had any influence on passing the marijuana bill? I'm not saying they hacked our election, election system, but if there are any vulnerabilities, I would have no doubt they would have exploited them. Most everybody in our little disinformation group is volunteering to work at the polls on election night, and I'm quite sure most of this group would also volunteer to help count the ballots on election night. Everybody I have met in our quest to validate our election system are real patriots, and I commend every one of them for their dedication and commitment. I am very proud to stand by this group of deplorable, disinformation-spreading group of patriot bozos.
Thanks, Gary. Is there any other public comment?
Can I use the, this thing? Hi, I'm Jessica Palama.
Hi, Jessica.
From T., South Dakota. And just wanted to talk to you today about election integrity. Okay. So I'd like to thank Mr. Kite for coming up here last week when we weren't here to clear up some of the questions we have regarding the Minnehaha County elections. First, I'd like to address the disinformation presented by Mr. Kite regarding the ballot boxes. Wednesday, April 6, Mr. Kite was on record at a local Republican meeting stating he had no problem with the ballot drop boxes. Friday, April 8, Ms. Heiburger was on the record stating that she was not clear what her problem was with the drop boxes. Later that morning, this legal notice was posted on the county website... Sorry, side ways. Stating that the county would no longer be using the ballot drop boxes for, and would be discontinued right after the city election. Mr. Kite and Lincoln County Auditor Sherry Lund were on TV stating that the pandemic is over, so they will not be using the ballot drop boxes anymore. When the truth of the matter is, these county auditors and all of you commissioners were breaking the law by allowing these ballot drop boxes. SDCL 12197 clearly states, "The ballot shall be delivered by mail, in person, or delivered to the person in charge of the election." This is the state law. However, our elected officials are comfortable breaking the law whenever it fits their agenda. Thankfully, the state's attorneys decided to pull the drop boxes because they knew they could not defend a lawsuit. Two, voters on the rolls. Here's an article from 2019 from SD News Watch that addresses this very issue with voter rolls, that supposedly they are removed after eight years and not participating in two general elections. We have affidavits from lots of people who have been, have people registered to vote at their address who haven't voted for 10 years or more. We have some, I can't even tell you how many, voters on the rolls that haven't voted for way past eight years, and they are still on the voter rolls. This is a known issue in South Dakota, and clearly, our officials don't want to clean it up. Three, when we talk about people who don't live here, we aren't talking about snowbirds or our bears. We're talking about people registered to vote in South Dakota who have never lived here, per the article. Read it, it's a good one. People are buying residency in South Dakota, perjuring themselves when they file, fill a voter registration form, and will never live in South Dakota. Every state in the country is on our voter rolls, and foreign, more foreign countries than I can count. We have affidavits stating this. We haven't brought them all to you yet because we're carefully compiling our evidence, but it will be in your hands. Tabulators. Mr. Kite said last week the tabulators are tested before and on election day. However, during the city election, there was an incorrect setting reported that day. The Argus Leader reported that candidates were told they were going to have a runoff election based on incoming results. However, a person with a brain who can think, working on a spreadsheet, knew the spreads, the results did not look right, because he logically deducted that these results were incorrect, and realized something was wrong. The auditor's office then fixed the incorrect setting on the tabulator, but that was late on election night. If there wasn't a human who could think with their brain that something was wrong, there would have been a runoff election. Why weren't these tests catching this before the election? What exactly are these tests doing? They are prepackaged ballots from the vendor, and clearly, this does not work. I've worked in income tax for 25 years. Every single year, our software is incorrectly programmed. People in the office who know how this should be calculated catch the software in corrections with their logical deductions and contact the vendor to fix the problem. People can think and reason. Machines do not. Mr. Kite said he thinks we are the small minority, and we want to cast doubt on the election. No, there is plenty of doubt in our election system. We are just the ones voicing our concerns to you. The fact that you commissioners and the auditors don't want to meet with us just furthers the divide. He also stated, we, all we care about is the presidential election. That is misinformation. No one from our group has ever said that. We care about our country, our state, our freedom, and all of our elections. We are involved in school bar elections, city elections. Mr. Kite stated, "There is a strong movement out there regarding election integrity." He's right.
Jessica, your time is up.
A few of us people that show up here to talk to you represent hundreds of people.
Jessica, your time is up. Thank you.
We're not going away. Thank you.
Hi.
Good morning.
Leah Anderson. I'm from Sioux Falls. I too am very grateful that you guys allowed Ben to share so much last week, because it helped me, seeing as how I'm running for auditor and there's nobody that's put anything out there about qualifications. But it was nice to hear everything that he's responsible for, and I think he's doing a great job with a lot of it. There's some areas of concern I have. I did listen to the April 19 meeting twice to make sure I got everything straight. Ben mentioned that registering to vote needs to be easier, and he fully supports online voter registration, along with our current Secretary of State. That would be a disaster, because it just opens up one more window for somebody that would like to cause harm, to get into our voter registration records and add people or vote for people. There's a lot of ways that that can be manipulated. It's interesting that the two candidates that are running for register of deeds at the same meeting that Jessica referred to, we had a Q and A, and those two candidates also made comment about how dangerous it would be to put property records online. So if we can't put our property records online, why in the world would we put our voter registration records online? Another area of concern that I had was Ben stated that humans can't focus to count ballots. We've heard this mentioned already. And that by using automation, you remove fraud. I don't know how you could make that statement and really believe it, because automation does not necessarily remove the fraud. Most machines are programmed by a human. So if they have the intent of fraud, they can make it happen in a machine just as they could by hand counting. The hand counting, the other issue on that is that humans with, that they can't focus, and like Jessica said, it was a human that ended up discovering the discrepancies in the city election recently. I'm also an accountant. I've spent many years in auditing. And my idea with tabulators would be, one, they do make tabulators that can be used that do not have a modem in them. So that would be an option. Another option would be to have a hand count. For sure, do hand counts that are sporadic, like maybe you take a few precincts that are not aware that they're going to be hand counted. You hand count those ballots, and you verify with the tabulator to make sure that those votes are counted correctly. That is not being done. The statements about the interest groups only being concerned about the large elections is also not true, because we are very concerned about the city election that recently happened, and whether or not that election was properly counted. I also just want to reference to Commissioner Barth's comment on bringing in the bozos off the street that have no job to count ballots. I don't think the current auditor, or the current election coordinator, or if I am the future auditor, would ever just bring bozos off the street to count ballots. I think we would find very qualified individuals. Most of the people that volunteer and work at the polling places are very qualified individuals that care about our elections, and they would be more than happy to count ballots. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Leah. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we're going to move on to our regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider 14 special events... Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider 14 special events on sale liquor licenses applications for Red Rock Bar and Grill Incorporated at Houston Speedway race events between May 2022 and September 2022.
Morning, Commissioner. Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So yes, we have before you a special event on sale liquor license request from the Red Rock Bar and Grill for various events at Houston Speedway. Houston Speedway will be hosting various racing events at their facility in Brandon. The special event license would allow Red Rock Bar and Grill to sell liquor at to be consumed on site during 14 different weekends. Those are listed there on the on your sheet. Just ask for your approval.
Okay, and this is a public hearing. So is there anyone here that wants to speak in support of these liquor licenses?
Doug Johnson, General Manager, Houston Speedway. This is basically just for, it's not for public consumption. This is only for our suite holders. So that's the reason for the application is just for our suite holders only. This won't be available to the general public that is coming out to Houston Speedway. So that's the reason for the the application is for our suite holders. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug, for the clarification. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in support of this application? Is there anyone who speaks in opposition to this application? Okay, I would look for a motion from the commission.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Real call vote.
Kurski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is an informational briefing for the fiscal year 23 budget, Carrie. Human Services. That's you, Carrie. Good morning.
I didn't anticipate the audience, but good morning, Commissioner. Carrie Benz, Human Services Department. I actually am here this morning just to give you a brief update and to apprise you of kind of what you will see in the in the budget for 2023 for our department. The information that you had before you is just really doing a good job of focusing on the primary areas that we feel that we need to invest in for 2023. We've started in 2022, and we hope to continue that into 2023. So I'm just going to go through each of those very quickly. Our community engagement, COVID really challenged us because we all were pretty much removed, and we tried to do our best to stay connected with people. That offered us a lot of challenge, but it also offered us an opportunity to really look at how we can better engage and be accessible to our community. So in 2022, so far, we've really spent our time working with South Dakota Cares and engaging with the state. Since mid-December, we've processed over 900 applications, and nearly $2 million have been administered to the community to assure that people have remained housed and have continued on using their utilities. We've also returned to face-to-face meetings. We've done a better job of engaging with our community and our partners. We've spent a great deal of time training social work interns. There's new positions now called community health workers in a variety of our providers in the community. Really, it's basically social workers just without the degree. But there are people who can assist people in getting connected to the community. So they've spent a great deal of time with us because they know that we really are a resource hub for our community. And so they've spent a great deal of time in our office, and we've had a great time getting to know them as well. And we've also spent some time training staff from other counties. We actually have a guest with us today from Watertown. She is going to be one of those community health workers. So she's spending time with us, learning our process and really engaging with our alliance team. She's going to be primarily focused on working with getting people that are coming out of the the penal system engaged in services and support. So we've had a great time of getting really getting re-engaged with our community. And probably our biggest success was getting our application online. So there's actually an online application you can fill out and get submitted, which is fantastic. And honestly, about 70 to 80% of the applications that we receive now come through our online app. So that's been incredibly successful. So really, for 2023, you won't see a lot of financial adjustment in this, but it's really increasing our outreach engagements, spending time doing education and working on our accessibility. We want to be accessible to those that we work for, which is our community members. And we also want to explore and engage, getting involved with some social media opportunities. We've been working with the SAO and IT and really exploring how we can better engage with our community so that they're informed and educated on the services that we provide and what the community has to offer as a whole. Secondly, our staffing. I'm certain throughout all of the presentations, you've heard that staffing retention is a challenge. And we really feel that development is imperative. We need to invest in our staff. And so in 2022, we really have that intensity of needs becoming more and more blatant. The needs of our community and those that we work with, the complexities of their issues have really become increasingly challenging and difficult to manage. And so we really have wanted to work on the staff involvement in getting better development and education. We really need to work on hiring and maintaining our variable hour staff at Safe Home. That's been a challenge. Our overnight staff is incredibly at an all-time low. And so we do all we can in order to best implement procedures, policies, and safety as well to encourage people to come on board with us. So for 2023, we're really going to be investing our time and efforts in advanced training and skill development. We really need to work on those advanced skills. As the intensity of the needs of our community increase, we then have to also adapt and get better development in our staff. We also want to optimize our office culture by improving our safety and our environment. And also then explore our the potential of hiring one FTE. That would be a consistent overnight staff at Safe Home. We currently are in the process of making some adjustments, some title changes, and as well as looking at how we can potentially offer some incentives to do overnights. And so with that, if that doesn't prove fruitful, that would be our proposal in our 2023 budget. So we're hopeful that what we're doing currently will alleviate that pressure. But if not, that will be what you'll see in our proposed budget. For housing, that's obviously a ginormous topic and item to tackle. Our shelters are ever challenged by the numbers and the complexities that our guests that their guests have. The comorbidity of issues and the ever-changing need for placement of those individuals is also being taxed. The access to affordable housing, even with vouchers, we're currently working with up to 50 people. They have vouchers for an apartment or a housing unit, and they would be able to get it at a subsidized rate. Unfortunately, housing is at an all-time low in availability. And so we really struggle and really have to work diligently to be able to find those folks housing. And then there's lack of what we've coined, what my office has coined as progressive housing. We know that we have people on all parts of the spectrum in regards to what their need levels are. And so with progressive housing development, we can then best address those needs at all levels. So our focus for 2023 in regards to housing is to collaborate to decompress those shelters.
Excuse me.
So I'm sorry, Carrie.
Sure.
I have several questions, and I haven't wanted to interrupt. But I'm wondering if you could explain what progressive housing is for us.
Sure. Progressive housing is we've, as my office has really started to work on looking at housing opportunities. One of the challenges that we have is we know that people in our community have different varying level of needs. And with progressive housing, we know that on one end of the spectrum, we have people who, with a little bit of support, guidance, and assistance, they then can move forward and be able to be productive and have employment, live independently, and move forward with their lives and be a productive citizen in our in our community. We also then know on the opposite end of that spectrum are people who have incredible challenges. It may be addiction. It may be mental health. It may be that they just don't have the job set skills that they need in order to find some good employment. And so those individuals are going to need additional support through intensive case management. And so with progressive housing, we know that we then can cover that whole spectrum of needs. And we don't have, we know that cookie cutter approach doesn't work, right? We know that not everyone is going to need that same level of care, the same intensity of case management. But with progressive housing, we can best then identify what those needs are and adjust services accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to ask any other questions? Do you want to wait till she's finished?
I'll wait till it's.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. All right. So then we really want to intensify staff training and align our providers with a consistent and connected approach. We know that with that intensity of need, we need to better understand and collaborate with vendors such as the drug and alcohol counselors, providers, mental health providers. We need to be better understanding of what those needs are for those individuals and make sure that we're doing the services justice in regards to providing them care. We also want to take a step back and look at Safe Home. For those that weren't able to make it, we had a fantastic celebration this past Friday to celebrate 10 years of operation for Safe Home. Commissioner Barth was one of our guest speakers. We really had an enjoyable afternoon, kind of recapping those 10 years. And so we really had an enjoyable time. But it also makes us realize that we really do need to take a step back and reassess that program and define what do we need to do with that program? What is that next step? We've done 10 years incredibly well. We may, in our assessment, determine that we're going to stay steadfast in our approach, and we're not going to change a thing. We, on the other hand, may look at that and say, what do we need to do differently to best accommodate the needs of those we serve? So and then we also want to be able to partner with the Accessible Housing Advisory Board, Sioux Falls Housing, the landlords, and really work towards better housing development, neighborhood revitalization. I know that that's one of the biggest parts of the city housing department right now. They really want to work on that piece in revitalizing some of our neighborhoods. So we want to pursue potential grants that can help us in supporting us do that. And then also, lastly, just to identify the data system management and our reporting of that data. We really want to look at, in 2022, look at our old records. We have records that date back to 1930 that we're pretty certain are obsolete now. We're ready to get rid of them, and I know Eric knows that, too. Working to save space and time helps us go paperless, honestly. And going paperless just means that our office can be much more efficient. We have the need for better tracking and reporting our data to be able to tell our story. And also to challenge to build out our data system, it's really difficult. And I know IT has been incredibly great with us in working at how do we best report our information, gather our information, and be able to spit out reports. But we really need a better tool in doing being able to do that. So we're going to continue to collaborate with them. But we're also going to, in 2023, work to hire a research expert that can help us really identify what information do we need to gather that's going to best tell our story and also be able to express what our outcomes are and the impact of those measures that we've taken. So bottom line, you won't see a tremendous change in our budget, per se. We're really going to work to best invest our dollars in training and data management. And we also want to invest in staff by investing in their expertise and getting better engaged in our community. So honestly, as far as budget goes, it'll probably be quite similar to what it was for this past year or for 2022. But we hope to just embellish our training and our opportunity to better engage with our community. So with that, I'll just answer questions.
Okay. Questions, Commissioner Benega.
Carrie, how long is your, not just yours, but the community's waiting list to get vouchers? I mean, I've heard that it's lengthy, lengthy, lengthy.
It's lengthy. Right now, I would guesstimate that it's probably sitting at about two years. And it's a slow process, not only to get a voucher, but even get getting people housed with that voucher has become increasingly a challenge. The availability of those units, in order to utilize a voucher, they have to meet the qualifications, which means that they can only hit a certain price point. And so that becomes a bigger challenge when we're so limited in that type of housing.
So how do you communicate with the people that are waiting two years to find out where they're at? I'm sure they're calling you on occasion, but.
Yep, they call us, they call us a fair amount. We're engaged with quite a number of them, and honestly, Sioux Falls Housing really manages that list. And so they also get frequent phone calls. I will say Sioux Falls Housing has really been engaged in trying to make application for grants and looking at ways that they can streamline that process as well. The hard part is, is there's only so much they're going to do as well. But I will say that their Affordable Housing Solutions Program, Rents, is doing a phenomenal job in really trying to look at rehabbing homes and trying to get new ones built so that it can accommodate some of these folks.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Kurski.
Carrie, last Friday, I attended the Safe Home 10-year anniversary, and I had to go early. I had a wedding at 2:00, so I stopped in early and visited with considerable considerable amount of the staff and great people working there. And I know it's always a challenge to get the right people working in that type of environment. What I gleaned from the conversation was, you know, 10 years ago, the concern was alcohol.
Yes.
And now that's kind of pendulum is kind of moving a little bit more towards from alcohol towards drug. What is the board or your office doing to kind of look at that mission and?
That's where we are. And I think that's when I talk about stepping back and really evaluating the program. We know that it's been effective, and we are very proud of our program. And I would, I would totally agree with you. I commend our team that's there. We have some of the best. I think one of the biggest challenges is that if we adjust what Safe Home can accommodate in regards to diagnoses. So if we would move from just alcohol and start including those that have addiction issues in regards to other substances, that just really complicates a lot of things. We are a fair housing project, and so obviously drugs are a substance that are illegal. And so it just complicates our process a great deal. Plus, it also really complicates and exemplifies that we really need to have training for staff if we start making some of those type of changes. Addiction is incredibly complex, and having the staff be on board to really be qualified to work with those individuals, to address those needs, that's tough. And so we would need to expedite training quite quickly if we were going to start making that size of change.
Yeah, not advocating change, but I know that the society is changing and, you know, what, you know, how we have to keep reexamining the mission of what we started and making sure it still fits.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Benega, or excuse me, Bender. Too many Bs in the room.
You'll get there. So I was a little bit curious about, earlier in your presentation, you talked about community health workers. And so are those folks that are employed generally by nonprofits that are out working with people? Or who employs a community health worker?
Sure. Community health workers are, it's actually a new program in a number of colleges and schools. And they're not really, they're not, they graduate with a certificate. And so it's, they're not a social worker, so it's not a four-year degree. But individuals in that capacity can work at clinics, they can work at hospitals. I know both Sanford and Navira have hired community health workers. And they really are somebody that can offer a great deal of support to the social workers. They're really the feet on the ground and really help navigate through community resources, getting people connected to those resources, conserving social work time to really probably pursue other things that they, you need the qualifications for. But the community health workers are all over. I know community health downstairs in our building, they also are going to be having community health workers. And so really, it is the feet and the boots on the ground. Honestly, they're going to be the ones that are going to do the connecting of service so they can even provide rides to people. So it really is having that warm handholding, which is pretty impressive, honestly.
So it's mainly in a medical setting?
Not necessarily. Community health workers could be at mental health centers. All of those type of facilities or agencies that really have high intense needs, but they don't have necessarily the staff bandwidth to be able to do all of the running and actual connecting of people. And so I think they're going to be pretty effective. It'll be impressive to see the impact, I'll say. I'm, I'm very interested in that.
I'm going to ask a follow-up question to hers, and then I'll get to you. And would those community health workers be people like that would be in our alliance program?
They could be in our future budgets, maybe. I think a lot of that is exactly what we do just at probably a lower level. Ours are specialized folks in. Ours are specialized folks in dealing with certain subsets. I think that when we look at the community health workers, I think they're going to be doing a lot of the behind-the-scenes stuff and getting people connected and potentially offering rides. I'm certainly not going to say, I don't want to speak for either hospital. But I do think that community health workers will be more knowledgeable and spend a great deal of time in the community, getting better resource lists for their agencies.
Okay, Commissioner Kerski?
Macro level, Carrie. So at one time, the Human Services kind of ran the county poor farm, which we obviously haven't had for a long time. But your office is responsible for everything from paying utility bills for some people that can't, forbearing indigence, there are people that die without anybody to take care of them. It's a broad, broad scope of work that you do. What is your annual budget and how many employees are in your department, just for the public record?
Yeah, our budget usually sits between that $5 and $6 million. And honestly, I think in regards to staff, that's kind of a moving target, especially when we're talking about the variable hour people. We currently have about 26 full-time staff and anywhere between 15 and 20 part-time staff.
Thank you.
Carrie, you want to mention, too, about how much we've spent in South Dakota Cares money? And maybe just a little bit briefly of what that South Dakota Cares money actually was and where it came from.
Sure.
Just because we've got a lot of people here that are learning.
Sure. So South Dakota Cares money comes from the feds. The feds delineated so many dollars to each state. Each state got an allotted amount of money. And our funds went to South Dakota housing. Through South Dakota housing, we then can distribute those funds to assist people in maintaining housing, their utility bills. And there are some vendors who are assisting them and administering some mortgage dollars. So our office engaged in this process primarily because, one, we wanted to make sure that we were doing right by South Dakota and certainly for our county of Minnehaha. And so we really wanted to engage to make sure that our folks were getting the right type of assistance when they needed it. And the waiting lists initially were months. So people could make application and it was taking three to four months to get their requests addressed. So my team engaged in that process. We've processed over 900 applications. And we have administered just about $2 million. So with those funds, we've been able to keep people housed, utilities on. And now we're kind of on the back end of things. And we're really trying to look at, how do we start with working with the state and our local individuals in regards to how do we best prep for when that money goes away? And so that we don't become dependent on those dollars. But instead, we work on education and getting people back into that workforce if they've lost their employment because of COVID and other extreme situations. So it's been, it's been a privilege to be a part of it. But we're ready to kind of get back to the, I don't know what I want to say, new norm, I guess? I don't know what word to use. We don't really have normal in our office because we just, we roll with the punches, quite frankly. So I think with South Dakota Cares, it's been a program that has really assisted people in not having to worry about if they have a home or not.
And South Dakota Cares came in effect because of what, COVID?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why it'll probably be going away.
Yes.
So. Any other questions for Carrie? Commissioner Burr?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment, being at that 10-year anniversary event, that you were also there, Cindy, and our friend Dick Kelly was there. Chris Torkelson from Lloyd Properties was there. And of course, we probably could not have done it without their help constructing that building. And I did hear the claim that the sheet rock is still too tough to try to punch a hole and you'll break your hand, which costs a little bit extra, but has paid off. Anyway, I remember being there 10 years ago when we broke ground. It was a darn cold day.
Any other comments for Carrie, questions? All right, thanks Carrie for your report.
Thank you.
Move on to item number 12, which is a briefing on the first quarter of the 2022 American Rescue Plan expenditures. Susan Beamer. Good morning, Susan.
Good morning. Susan Beeman with the auditor's office. Just wanted to brief you on our first quarter 2022 expenditures under the American Rescue Plan funding that we had received last year. Our report is due at the end of the week. And so we wanted just to take this time to run through these expenses. So the project and expenditure report, we are required to list projects. So you'll see that I've identified six projects that we're reporting this quarter. Some of them, we are not drawing or reporting that an actual expenditure, but we're reporting the project with zero expenditures thus far. So for example, the first item is the replacing lost revenue. As we've discussed in prior meetings, counties have the option to, to elect a standard allowance of up to $10 million of their award. So the county has elected that $10 million standard allowance for lost revenue. We have not drawn down any of those funds yet, so we will be reporting zero for that. The second project is the COVID sick leave bank that the commission approved temporarily back in January of 2022 and recently extended. We are reporting expenditures of roughly $99,000 for that. Item number three is our staffing in our jail related to COVID isolation. Any inmate that is test positive, has symptomatic or exposure, they move into a certain area in the jail. So that staffing and benefits related to, to taking care of those inmates are an enumerated expense allowed under ARPA. Number four is the expenses related to upgrading our commission chamber audiovisual equipment. Again, that is an enumerated use under ARPA as it will help us to provide a better remote video capability process for our viewers that watch online. The fifth item is our premium pay that the commission approved back in January of 2022. You'll see that the expenditures for the first quarter is zero, that those expenditures were paid out in April of 2022, which were roughly $1.1 million, which will be reported on our second quarter report. And then lastly, the sixth item is our retention bonus that you approved in January as well. Those aren't starting until after first quarter. So again, we reported that as a zero for current period expenditures, but reported as, as an approved project.
Thanks, Susan.
Any questions?
Questions for Susan on the report? Commissioner Kerski?
I just, if I could, I just want to be reminded of when we have to have that expended. It's 2024 or 2026? I can't remember which.
It's a little bit complicated in the sense that we have to have it obligated by the end of 2024 and expended by the end of 2026. So I will give you two examples of what that means. So for example, if you had a contract that you signed in 2024, you have, because you had your contract for, let's say, $1 million signed by the end of '24, you could spend that up through the end of '26. The other question or scenario is, let's say you have an operating expense. So example, like our jail staffing for the COVID unit. What we have been advised by one of the accounting firms that we have been working with is that in that case, since it's an operational expense, your 2025 budget would be approved and obligated in '24. And thus, your '25 expenses would be allowed. There's some question on if '26 would be allowed in that, that example. So we're, at this point, just going with, through the '25 for that is kind of what we're thinking. But, you know, with all of the communication from the US Treasury, that could change over time. So we're just keeping an eye on that at this time.
Okay, thanks, Susan. Commissioner Kerski, I think you had a comment.
Yes, thank you for the report, Susan. I appreciate it. The only thing I would ask that you add, you know, not just have expenditures this period, but also maybe to date? That way, because it looks like, for example, lost revenue, we haven't spent anything, but I believe that we have, correct?
We actually, this is our first report. So this is the, the total that we have reported for first quarter of $369,250 is the only dollars we've reported thus far. We did not report any expenditures in 2021. And so going forward, yes, we can add the year-to-date or the like-to-date.
Yeah, thank you. That would help.
Yep.
Commissioner Bender?
I just, I would like to thank you for this report. And I think that there's something that I've really learned through this process and through some other grants that we've been provided, been fortunate enough to receive at the county, is that there is a huge revenue source, but it is a tremendous amount of oversight and, and record-keeping and hours and hours and hours that somebody spends on it. And I really appreciate the knowledge you brought into the position and that, the work that you've done to make sure that we are dotting all our i's and crossing all of our t's appropriately. So thank you.
You're welcome. And you're correct, the, our total allotment of roughly $37.5 million has to follow, you know, firm guidance, the federal grant rules. And so some of those rules are potentially stricter than what normal county or state policy requires. So that's just where that, that balancing act of making sure that we dot our i's, cross our t's.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Just to verify, and we've been in contact with the local auditor to encourage and help us go through and, I guess, understand what those definitions sometimes are because they are a little fuzzy on a regular basis.
Correct. We, we partnered with CCOG, who then had a contract with IBALE. And so all of the six items that we've reported this quarter are enumerated under the final rule. So those are fairly spelled out within, as an allowable expenditure. But like the, the question regarding the operational expenditures for '25 and '26, that was a question we did pass through CCOG to IBALE because the guidance within the final rule was not, not very clear or 100% clear. But what I've learned thus far in the last year is the US Treasury routinely puts out webinars and updates. So as we continue going through the next couple of years, I'm, I would expect more guidance to be released.
I remember right, the first definition and guidelines were like 400 pages?
Yeah, so our final rule is roughly 450 pages.
Yeah.
Just some light reading.
Yeah, I have a binder.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Susan, for your time.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign the change order number two with Henry Carlson. This will be two motions. And the second one will be for an amendment to ISG agreements for Minnehaw County Highway Department facilities. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Before you today is something, considering all the building projects we've been doing, you don't get change orders. We truly have made things go really, really, really well in the projects that we've gone through and have done. So this is for the highway facility. And before you today are two contracts that we bring forward. And the, the driver of this whole thing, with the exception of a small amount of money for grip struts on the catwalk stairs, and Steve is here to explain all those things if you'd like more, but is for, to support the addition of the in-floor heating in the area where the trucks will be stored. I think this came up quite a bit after last year's tour, I believe, kind of the conversation started at that point. And you've had some conversations on that. We fully anticipate that we will be able to, by the end of the year, roll this into the cost of the project. At this point, it would be funded out of the highway fund, which has the funds to go through and do this. A little bit unusual, just different for us. When we look at the costs of this, $10,000 of this is for the ISG. The remaining $300,000 is for that in-floor heating that they're doing. So a nice addition. And I think, Steve, I don't know if you'd agree with me or not, but this project has probably been hit more by escalating costs than our other projects have been. And even with that, we're going to bring this in within budget.
Any questions for Carol on this?
I'm just going to make one comment. And you could probably have Steve make it, too. But in-floor heating is not a fluff. In-floor heating is because we have snow trucks that are full of ice and cold when they come in. And to get them melted off quickly is, is good for our equipment. So Steve, I'll let you say it more eloquently than I just did, but this is not a fluff thing.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Grown, Highway Superintendent. If we went with the typical gas heaters up in the ceiling, we'd have standing water for several days under our trucks after a snow event. You can go to our south building that we're renting this year for storage and it's pretty much wet all the time using in-floor heat. Heat's rating it up. By the time we come in the next morning, the floor will be dry.
Also speaking from experience, it helps with the heating costs of the facility.
Yes, it does.
Commissioner Kerski?
I didn't take a deep dive into the look at this, but I imagine we had some radiant heating before and that's not going to be there anymore? Are we leaving that in?
There is going to be a little bit of radiant here, heating at the doorways for the blast when the doors are open. But we're, we haven't gotten the number yet on the cost savings. We're anticipating, I think it was right around $50,000 deduct on the radiant heating.
To remove that, okay, thank you.
Okay, I would need...
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr?
Steve, what does a new snowplow truck and plow cost?
We ordered two chassis last week. They're about $150,000 just for the chassis. Typically, in the past, the build for the box, the wings, the underbody plow and the front plow would be in that $120,000 to $140,000 range per truck. We attempted to buy the builds for our two new chassis last month. And there's surcharges now and the tune of $20,000 to $30,000 a truck, which we were unable to legally procure. May 1st, we get new pricing and we are not looking forward to the numbers for the, with the increase in stainless steel and metal.
So $250,000 and up is what they cost?
Could be close to 300 when it's all said and done.
And how many?
We have 18.
Okay. I would look for a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the change order number two with Henry Carlson.
移到
Second.
A motion and a second. We need a roll call vote, please.
Kerski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And the second motion is to amend the ISG agreement for Minnehaw County Highway Department Facility. Is there a motion?
移到
Second.
A motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Steve. Item number 14 is a proposed Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. Tyler?
Good morning, Tyler Klett, Commission Office. So today, we wanted to provide an update and a summary of kind of where we're at so far with the proposed Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. The Minnehaw County Commission addressed the proposed Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline at three different meetings, March 15th, March 22nd, and April 5th. Each of these public meetings included time for citizens to address the commission and share their concerns. Based on this valuable citizen input, the commission voted to send a letter to the Public Utilities Commission, clearly stating the real concerns related to the proposed pipeline. The deadline to file for party status for this docket number was April 8th. On April 14th, then, the PUC met to consider if they should grant party status to those that had applied. At that April 14th, Public Utilities Commission meeting, Chairman Nelson had moved that those who the PUC determined needed to provide additional information to be considered for party status were not going to be granted party status on April 14th and that they had the next two weeks to provide additional information to the PUC on why they believe they have a legal right to party status in this docket. And that's from the meeting recording. On March 17th, the PUC staff filed a memo which outlined the legal standing required to become a formal party to a PUC proceeding. Filing for party status is a legal instrument and does not indicate either support or opposition to a PUC proceeding. Providing written comments to the PUC is the only way at this point for, in the proceeding, to make clear the concerns of Minnehaw County. And as of April 21st, only Brown and McPherson Counties have joined Minnehaw County in providing a letter on the official public record indicating their proposed concerns related to this pipeline. I do want to reiterate, I'll just go back over the letter that the commission sent. On April 15th, sorry, on February 15th, 2022, Minnehaw County Auditor Bennett Kite received correspondence from Brett Kenneke fulfilling the statutory requirement to notify the receipt of an application pursuant to SCCL 4941B15 and 4941B17. The proposed carbon dioxide transmission pipeline, PUC docket HP22001, enters the southwest portion of Minnehaw County and runs approximately northwest, covering 26.64 miles across the western portion of Minnehaw County. In service of the citizens of Minnehaw County, the commission has provided opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed pipeline. These concerns are summarized below. The potential inappropriate use of eminent domain for private benefit, the proposed setbacks and potential health and safety of both humans and livestock, the lack of appropriate bonding or other exit strategies should the pipeline cease operation, the lack of appropriate emergency response training provided to local authorities to handle any potential crisis events, the concern that previous conditions imposed by the Public Utilities Commission are not enforced, and that some carbon solutions agree that the landowners be held harmless from all liabilities and claims for damages. The county commission deferred action regarding the proposed pipeline until after the March 23rd, 2022 PUC public hearing. At that public hearing, Summit Carbon Solutions provided an overview of their process during this public hearing and concerned citizens gave their input on the process. The Minnehaw County Commission firmly... The Minnehaha County Commission firmly concurs with these concerns related to PUC docket HP twenty-two, zero-zero-one in its current form. Further, the Minnehaha County Commission urges the Public Utilities Commission to seriously consider the comments of the citizens of South Dakota as a primary variable in determining the outcome of this PUC docket. And this again was filed with the Public Utilities Commission, I believe, on April sixth. With that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Tyler thus far? Okay. So, I know we have a lot of people here again about the pipeline. I want to remind you, this is not a public hearing, but I'm going to allow some testimony. If you, I would prefer if you had a spokesperson, because I know Mr. Bonander has spoken a lot for you, but if you would try not to repeat anything that we've talked about in the past, and we just wanted to give you another opportunity, there's still been some concern about the direction that we've gone. So, if there's someone that wants to speak on the pipeline, I would remind you again, just try not to repeat things that we've talked about in the past, and we just wanted to remind you of what we've done. So, Mr. Elvin, I know you wanted to speak briefly, so, okay, come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Francis Phillips. I'm the general manager of Wild Water West, and I'm here representing the ownership and the interests of our attraction out there. We sit on just under a hundred acres of property out on the west side of Sioux Falls. And I remember back in nineteen eighty-eight, when I first stood at this podium, probably this podium, granting permission to start this water park. I was less gray and I had more hair back in those days. Now, thirty-three years later, you can see now the development that we've been able to accomplish. And a year ago, I also applied to do a twenty-two acre campground, which I was appreciative of, and that's what we're putting together. Remember now, this campground is twenty-four, seven. We're no longer at daytime activity. We have two hundred spaces out there for tourists and for backing and pull-through, you know, just a full-scale water park that butts right up against our water park. So, while we are on the fringes, the western fringes of Sioux Falls, this pipeline, heavy gas pipeline, remember now, Wall Lake. We are a valley from Wall Lake all the way through Wild Water West, all the way to the Skunk Creek. So, we're in a low-lying valley. Heavy gases hug low-lying valleys. We are gravely concerned, and pun intended, we are gravely concerned of a breach. Our backyard, we were then less, from what I gather, we are less than a mile and a half east of this proposed pipeline. Our backyard is your backyard. I remember coming into this town in the late eighties. By the time I was driving west on Forty-first Street, if I got to Marion, I was lost. You were out of town. Now, look at this burgeoning arm of our town. It is growing immensely on the west side. Had I known of this proposed plan a year ago, we would have really looked at a future multimillion-dollar investment that we put in for a campground. There is no way, there is no way that we are going to be able to communicate with our staff. Number two, remember now, we have over two hundred thousand tourists and local residents that visit this park every year. Over two hundred high school and college staff that we have every year, okay? This is a big deal to us. We don't want this in our backyard in that such close proximity, any more than you would want this in your backyard.
Mr. Phillips.
We're county people.
And just remember, we already know that.
I know that, but I'm just saying that this is the only opportunity. So, all I say to you is, I am joining the legions that are opposed to the proximity of this pipeline as it relates to the west side of Sioux Falls, which we're all a part of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Is there anyone else that wants to talk about anything that has not been discussed before? Okay. And give it back to the commission to make any comments that you might have about what action we have taken thus far. Commissioner Karski?
Yes. I kind of pushed for this to be an agenda item so we could have a public discussion about it, because I did receive several emails about the extension of the PUC's filing deadline, only to find out that the filing deadline was to provide additional information on filings or requests for party status that had already been made. So, my understanding of this is, for us to apply for party status, that ship is, for the most part, pretty well sailed. We don't have the opportunity unless we had filed prior to April eighth. There are extenuating circumstances, of course, but I, you know, the whole discussion about party status and, you know, what's the role of the county in party status, when you look at the, and I think this is the PUC's, yes, this is the PUC's information, you only need to apply for party status if you want to participate formally in the docket by putting on actual testimony or other factual evidence, conducting discovery, cross-examining witness, et cetera, et cetera. I don't see where the county formally would be involved in that type of a process. We expressed our concerns to the PUC, the concerns of our citizens, to the Public Utilities Commission about setbacks and depth and legal liability and miscellaneous other subjects. So, I, party status to me is not something I want to pursue, and I just want to go on record with that because I don't think that's the right direction for us to go. I know that we are having and have already started the conversation with our planning commission on, let's really take a look, should we have the discussion about a moratorium for a year or two years? What should it be? Should we talk more about setbacks? Should we talk more about depth? Should we talk more about all these other items that we can truly impact? We do not permit pipelines, but we could have certain standards that go beyond the minimums that are set by the federal government. So, those are the areas that I would like to pursue to make sure that if anything does come through this county, that it is done and our citizens are protected. But we don't, we do not permit pipelines. It's just plain and simple. It's not the way it works. But we can set standards, if they are going to be permitted, that we would like to see enforced, of course. What we would like to see and what the courts maybe interpret is being legal are always going to be open to debate until that time happens. So, when it comes to party status, I personally don't see us having a dog in that fight. But when it comes to taking a look at our zoning laws, that's the direction I would like to pursue this. And I hope that we are able to bring something to this commission for consideration and public input.
I just want to make a clarification of terms. You can't speak, Joy, sorry. Permitting means a legal piece of paper, not that we don't permit any pipelines, we don't give the legal paper. That's what, I just want to make sure that for the listening audience, there's a little difference in semantics of what permitting means. Commissioner Bender?
And the only other thing I was going to clarify about Commissioner Karski's comments is that I think that he's correct, that there is some interest in looking at whether there's a role for an ordinance here on pipelines. I think safety is the primary concern that we've heard about and that we have concerns about, and we'd like to spend our time working on something that we could actually affect the process as opposed to just, you know, basically, you know, expressing sentiments of other landowners. And so, I also am interested in looking more at an ordinance, and that's where the moratorium would come into place. So, I understand the process. There's a, we have the ability under state law to put a moratorium in place solely for the purpose of giving us an opportunity, because we don't have anybody on staff who's an expert in pipelines, to study the matter, try to understand the issues, try to understand what best practices are in our area, in our, you know, weather situations, what's best to keep people safe. And that's what, I think that's an area where we might be able to impact the process.
We'd also want to make sure we're following federal and state laws, and we don't get ourselves into legal trouble and end up in the court. Commissioner Benega?
The only thing that I would add to Commissioner Karski and Commissioner Bender's comments is that I've had multiple emails like everybody else and phone calls and all those communication devices, but we don't get involved in eminent domain. Eminent domain is a circuit court-related issue. We have no input into that process. So, you need to be aware of the fact that if you don't want to sell your land and someone tries to take over that piece of property from you on an eminent domain, that goes directly to circuit court. We are not involved in that. And I've mentioned that a couple of times before, but unfortunately, didn't state it either the right way or people didn't want to listen to me. That's part of the deal. So, just want to make sure that that gets clarified again.
Additional comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bird?
I have a few things I would like to say. One is, our letter that we sent only lists the concerns that have been brought to us. It doesn't have an opinion. And in my view, not having an opinion means we're, we acquiesce to this project, that we want this project. Otherwise, we could say we didn't want this project, but we have not said that. And as far as the party status, I've been told over and over that we can't apply for it. Well, if we applied for it and didn't get it, that's the same as not applying for it. I mean, if you don't ask that girl to the prom, you'll never know if she might have said yes. I think that we're missing the boat in that, on that issue. I do appreciate Dean's comments on the moratorium and the setbacks, but our letter is at best namby-pamby. We're just listing the things that the people have brought to us. We don't list the things that we think. I personally have sent a letter, which is on their website. And as far as eminent domain, this is not a public utility. This is a for-profit company who's greenwashing this project to take billions of dollars from the federal government and pretend to get rid of this carbon dioxide. There are other ways of doing it. They have machines that can take it out of the air. They have people that are using it for fracking in Texas right now. As far as eminent domain, if they wanted to take my house so someone could build a shopping center there, would that be okay? It's been done in other places under eminent domain. And I just think we're missing the boat on this. And I wouldn't mind it if we sent a stronger letter, if we're not going to apply for party status, but the letter we sent has no opinion. It just lists the things we've heard. I think that shows that we, in fact, at some level, support the project.
Commissioner Bendega, or Bender, excuse me, twice today.
I would just point out to the folks listening and to Commissioner Barth, that the letter specifically says that the Minnehaha County Commission firmly concurs with those concerns, and that we urge the PUC to seriously consider the comments. And so, I think that we took a fairly strong statement. It's pretty clear, I think, for somebody reading it, what we think. And I think that is that we have gone on record and represented the interests of our citizens and the testimony that we've heard to the PUC.
Anything else? Okay. Hopefully, you understand where we're at. We are opposed to it, and we're doing the best we can. So, with that, we're going to move on to item number fifteen, a briefing on the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance County Tour. Tyler.
Tyler Clack, Commission Office. On May tenth, we'll be taking our annual county tour hosted by the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. The plan, and I don't think anything's going to change at this point, but it could, is to leave from the fairgrounds at eight AM, where we'll get a little bit of an update on the Fairgrounds Task Force, I think. And then, from there, the plan is to head towards Humboldt to tour both first manufacturing and primary manufacturing, two different places. The group will get to split off and go to each of those spots. Then, from there, we'll head to the Crooks Community Center for a presentation on the Tri Valley School District and an overview of a new school that's on its way there. After that, we'll head to Bowdine Dairy, where we will not be getting off the bus, but we will be learning about the digesters that they have out there. And then, from there, head to Morton Center, where with a welcome from Brian Hefty, lunch sponsored by Sioux Valley Energy, where we'll learn a little about, a little bit about electric cars and electric vehicles. From there, we'll head to Nordstrom's, and then, a presentation on Palisades Park and some of the work that's been going on out there. And finally, the plan is to end up at Tucker's Walk, which I believe is a winery. And from there, though, they'll bring us back to the fairgrounds. So, it might change a little bit, but I don't think it will.
Hoping to conclude somewhere between four and four-thirty.
Yes.
So, if you've got plans after to run back to work, just so you kind of have an idea. Are there any questions for Tyler on the bus tour? We've been doing this for probably about four or five years, I think, now, where we tour some of the rural county businesses and expansions. And it's just very valuable information for the commission to realize or to see some of the stuff that has gone on and some of the projects, maybe that we have even permitted. So, yeah.
It's a wonderful program.
Yeah, it really is. So, okay. Thanks, Tyler. We'll move on to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bird?
We had a planning and zoning meeting last night, and we, the CAFO that was on the list withdrew at their own request. We had a bit of a discussion with people in Renner who did not want another commercial building built on one-fifteen. That's Cliff Avenue, the main drag up there. And it was the same sort of flood zone issues as before. And we also had a lengthy discussion of a consent agenda item, rezoning some land on the, off of Highway thirty-four. But we got out of there at nine-thirty. That's my report.
Okay. Any other liaison reports?
Can I ask a quick question, Cindy?
Sure.
Is the, is the Amazon Building in Tri Valley's area?
It is. Okay. I would look for non-action commission discussion. Commissioner?
Commissioner Higerger, I'd ask Chris Swanson from the Treasurer's Office to come forward. We've had quotes about the furniture and equipment to be expanded, if you will, and to be replaced in the Treasurer's Office. We were going to move a wall as part of the construction project, and Mark is going to help us with that. But as been mentioned on other projects, we're seeing some cost changes, and Chris is here to talk about that. A little bit of difference, unfortunately, we're kind of on a timeframe crunch, so we're ready to move forward, but we're going to need to talk about it again next week.
Sure. Chris Swanson, County Treasurer. So, our final numbers came in from Camfield at eighty-nine, five, and so that puts us twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars over budget. We are using some of our pre-existing office structures and have decided to wait on a new window until next year. And then, in speaking with Mark Krantz, he said there'd be money in the building fund to construct that wall needed for Cindy and Ellen's office space. So, I'm just basically asking for approval to move forward with that proposal. We started out, like, I think, I think it was a hundred and eighteen, I have to check, a hundred and eighteen thousand. We were able to do, make a few changes in there and got it down to eighty-nine, five. And so, we're just, and I know we were over budget a little bit, so we just want to know if we can have approval for, to move forward on that.
So, we actually can't do approval today. We will put it on the agenda for next week, but there is a deadline as far as ordering the equipment because the cost is going up before next week. And so, we will be sitting on a lot more expense if we don't just, you know, okay that we at least order the furniture, and we'll have to approve it next week with a motion. And so, it was just kind of a FYI, if anybody has any heartburn on that. Commissioner Bender?
So, next week, you'll have an actual, I'm not sure that I followed all your numbers, to be honest with you, so I'm just curious if next week you'll have an actual budget for the project, so we can actually see.
We could have that. I know next week I'm going to be in Pierce, so I might even have to move that down the road maybe another couple of weeks.
We'll probably...
We'll probably put it on, somebody can present.
Okay, that's very fine.
I think, I think if we're gonna, if we're gonna talk about ordering furniture, we need to get it done.
Okay, all right, very good. So we will have that done for you next week, then.
Doesn't Mark Krins actually order the furniture?
Yes.
So maybe Mark can make the presentation.
Certainly, I can get that written up and we can do that.
So at the end of the day, you had a budget that was in your, your 2022 budget.
Correct.
And that included this furniture.
So we started out with $78,000, and we-
Can you answer my question?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, no, did, did the budget include the furniture?
I believe it did, yes.
Okay.
It did. And then with the cost of everything right now, it's, I didn't see that that would go up like the way it did.
Okay. So it went up, but if we don't, if we don't get some approval today, it's going up more.
Correct. Eight percent, I believe.
There's an eight percent increase as of next week.
Okay. Commissioner Karski.
Isn't there room in our facilities budget for furniture where that could just be taken out of there? Or does it have to come out of this specific budget? Can we make that purchase from facilities and then move money?
I think that's a good question for Mark. He's already volunteered to take care of the wall construction in his building account, so we can ask him for an update to see if there's any room, but it seems like the place that we budgeted in the first place was from the Treasurer's Office. So besides the pricing issue, there's also delivery issue, so we can include that in the conversation next week. This is just more of an informational inform, point than a agenda item at this point. But we do need to verify the number.
And you can provide information about the delivery issue that you alluded to later?
If you know what delivery's going to be on anything, you could make a fortune right now.
So Carol has a comment too, Chris. She's coming in behind you.
Just in terms of, in terms of timing, Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, in terms of timing, somebody else in my office who's no longer there actually worked on this furniture project, so I did not detail it. But I believe that when Chris would have put this initial budget together a year ago, we didn't have the final bids yet from Canfield's. And that's, you know, there was a little bit of a shot in the dark on doing, on doing that. So Mark did text that he could come, he's actually coming right down the hallway. He is fast.
He is fast.
We don't know who is listening to your meetings, but Mark can just detail a little bit more about, as he's taking over the furniture.
You know, when I started this job almost 12 years ago, our, our department heads had to come to the meetings and sit here in order to hear what was going on. And because of changes in technology and everything, a lot of our department heads listen online now, and if something comes up, they come running, and it's really nice. But we, there's just less lost time as them having to sit here for two and three hours sometimes for, just for a possibility like this. So Mark, yes, have you, can you answer some of our questions?
Sure. A little out of breath, but we're good. I guess, I think if I, oh, so Mark Krins, Facilities Department. So Dean, I guess from where I ended was, you're kind of wondering where the whole process started, is that correct? Where we were at budget-wise, or?
Well, I had, yeah, I had asked that question. I was just was trying to understand exactly where we were today.
Okay, so originally, when we looked at doing renovation, we weren't looking at furniture. And I think, if I remember right, it was a little over $70,000 for construction. So what we did, working with Henry Carlson, was if we waited till construction started in the admin building here, we could save a little over $20,000 on general requirements. So we decided to hold off, had the, excuse me, the conversations about the furniture and the construction of the Treasurer's Office about right at that timeframe, so as the construction started. So then, once, we circled back a few times because scope of the work, scope of the furniture changed. We'd send the design back to Canfield's for an update. And then about two weeks ago, I got the email that the furniture price was going to increase by eight percent come May 1st. So that's where we wanted to come in and see if we could get the approval before then. I did reach out to him to see if we could get an extension on that, waiting to hear back, but it sounds like it's kind of unlikely, so that's where we're at. We're going to do a little bit of construction on the wall, maybe $20,000. I'm meeting with Henry Carlson Thursday this week to get actual pricing on that, but that's where.
Commissioner Karski. So when we do a project, we've budgeted for the construction, that is put in your budget or is it put in the department budget? And then the furniture also, you, we kind of made you the furniture king, police, whatever. Does the furniture get out of that department's budget, or is that all allocated to your budget?
We've been doing it both ways. So Public Defender, they had some, some end-of-year savings, they purchased some furniture. Typically, it's been out of the building fund that we've been paying for the furniture and, and the construction, really, so we've been kind of doing it both ways.
And in this case?
So, so in this case, she has $70,000 budgeted total, I believe, for the entire project. So there's some room in the building fund to cover the rest of the expense of the furniture and the construction.
Okay, so the money is there. So that clarifies that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett.
So Chris, how much more than $70,000 do you think it'll be?
Maybe that's Mark's question.
Yeah, so furniture proposal was right at $90,000, 89.5, and then, I'm estimating $20,000 for the construction. There's not a lot, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't think, we, have we ever talked about this furniture that you guys are buying? What is it? I mean, are we buying cubes? What are we buying?
Yeah, it's, the same workstations that we're putting in per the county standard.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Are you okay with it's going to be on next week's agenda to?
Keep smiling, Chris, we're on your side.
Yeah, that's right. Just trying to figure it out procedurally. Okay. So if there's no other comments on that, I'm going to go to a different comment. Commissioner Barrett?
I was hoping to comment on the election issue.
Okay.
So I'm sorry that they all left and then blamed us because they left last week. You know, they left and we talked about it. Well, they left today, and I'd like to talk about it. You know, this last presidential election was, you know, contested, so to speak, but the facts are that the previous president's Department of Justice, Human Services, not Human Services, Homeland Security, Attorney General, his vice president, 80 different judges, some appointed by the previous president, agreed that it was fair. Three times it went to the Supreme Court, and they didn't see a problem. Multiple accounts and forensic audits. You know, Maricopa County, Arizona recounted by hand all of their votes. It took 11 months, and they increased Biden's total by 199 votes. So, you know, one of the folks on there, Sidney Powell, lied about, about the voting machines, and her defense is that no reasonable person would believe it. No reasonable person would believe this attorney and her claims of fraud. Well, I think there are a lot of people that aren't necessarily reasonable. And speaking as a part-time bozo, I think there are a lot of bozos out there that ought to study the issue and not smoke the, smoke it. Anyway, it makes me crabby that they all left. It makes me crabby I had to listen to them for 30 minutes. It makes me crabby that they don't want the facts. They just want to say what, what, what they believe. And their belief does not make it true. Anyway, thank you.
Okay. I have two other things I want to bring up. One is, probably saw an email from Carol that said that we graduated, five, well, actually it wasn't from Carol, from, graduated another five people from the High Performance Leadership Academy, which is put out by National Association of Counties. It's a 12-week online leadership, high-performance leadership training. We have a, I don't even know how many from Minnehaha County. A lot of people from Minnehaha County, department heads and others have gone through this training now. And so I just wanted to mention their name. They completed it this last, or the end of April. So Susan Beeman, who was here earlier, Lori Montes, Tyler Clatt, Mark Krins, and Steve Bronin. So you've actually seen everyone except for Lori this morning. And so I've done it, Commissioner Bender has done it, I'm not sure of my other commissioners, but it's hard. It's hard. It's, it's 12 weeks of time, and it takes about five to six hours per week, wouldn't you say, of trying to keep up with, with the homework that you have. It's a very good program, and I think I, I personally learned a lot from it, and I think everyone that I've talked to that has taken it thinks it's an excellent opportunity to learn more leadership skills. So I just wanted to congratulate them and thank them for taking it, and thank Minnehaha County for supporting that program and paying for it. And then one thing else I wanted to mention that came up during our public opinions was, just to reiterate to our community that this is now a polling place. We are in absentee balloting, and it is law that you cannot have signs or posters or anything within, I don't remember how many feet, of a polling place. And so if somebody wanted to put a, a sign for their candidate outside of Minnehaha County Administration Building, it would be, have to be X number of feet away. And so that actually has also to do with if you wear a shirt that supports a candidate or an amendment, you can't wear that in this building. It's support, it's the same with hats. You can't do that. So it wasn't anything to call out a specific person. We've had this happen in the past where we've had to ask people to turn their shirts inside out or to remove their shirts or to put on a coat. So I will, I think, I'm just saying this for staff right now, I think in our little mantras that we do at the very beginning where we say the listening device and all that, if we could just put a line in my notes that says, "This is a polling place, and please be respectful of people who are voting," so that it's just part of it for the next, I mean, this is going to be now through November, pretty much. Commissioner Karski.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Six years ago, when I was running for the primary, I had a nice little magnet on the side of my car, "Vote for me." And the county auditor at the time went and took the sign off the side of my car and put it beside his desk because it wasn't appropriate, and I, you know, I should have known that, but I wasn't thinking, and people can make mistakes. I would suggest to all my fellow commissioners, this is just my advice, after being on the city council for five years and seeing a lot more public input than what we have as a county commission, that if you're going to address public input, you get away from the up here and you go down there and talk. And I'm going to tell you that if anybody wants to talk to me about public input, call me. I'm more than willing to hear what you have to say and, and have that discussion with you, but I'm not going to debate from this position, public input, and it's, that is not the purpose of public input, in my perspective.
In public input, we don't make comments because it's not an agenda item, and so it's not to be disrespectful to who's at the podium. You just don't do that. It's not an agenda item. I will also say, it's 100 feet from this building. I was going to say 100 yards, and I knew that wasn't right, so I was like, I'm not going to say anything. 100 feet from this building, it was, it's considered a polling place, so. Any additional comments?
Question for Commissioner Karski. If you have a sign that says, "Vote for me," who do people vote for? I mean, me is not on the ballot.
Well.
Good job, good job.
I kept it purposely vague, Commissioner.
Okay. Is there any more non-action commission discussion? Carol.
Carol Muller, Commission Office. Just a quick reminder for everybody that next Monday and Tuesday will be the first component of the Fairgrounds Task Force that you have been put together. This is the very first stage. It's only a two-day workshop where there was really, we have our, our expert coming in, Charlie Smith, who's an architect and has what he calls a boutique business in doing events and fairs. And every time I talk to him, he's traveling someplace else, from one coast to the other. And so he'll be here at the beginning of the week, the task force, the parts that will be open to the public. We certainly invite people to come in, Monday noon to 1:45 at the Ram Cota. Will be the first time for them to really get together on that, although there's meetings taking place prior to that. And then on Tuesday, the same timeframe, is reviewing concepts that Mr. Smith will be putting together. And then the one that most people will probably be interested in is the Tuesday, 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. at the Ram Cota, which will be a summary session of those two days. So again, it's our first step into moving in towards this kind of process. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Anything else? Okay, I would look for a motion. We have no executive section, session, correct? Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All voters, bayers say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion passes unanimously. Go enjoy the non-windy day.
Carol.
Because we don't get many of that.